Please join me in answering.
....................................
Okay, our first performance this evening is Rich St. Blair.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Chairman Coombs has the yearly report for the MS4 stormwater stuff. That needs to get signed tonight and it needs to go out to Megan tomorrow morning, first thing, as soon as you get here.
Send it in tonight.
Okay.
Send it in by midnight.
Okay. Yep, there's midnight deadline. So that needs to go. I've gone through it. It's basically, it just tells the EPA and the state DES what we've done, where we are. I think we've been pretty, we've been honest with them. We haven't met all the goals for year two. I think that's all spelled out in the report. They also understand that the town hall was basically closed. And things have been screwed up for the last six or seven months, so it's, you know, half the year that we had to do this work. I think with you folks signing the contract last week or the week before, we have a clear path to get ourselves going and get everything taken care of, so I would just make sure that gets done. Other thing, just a public announcement. I'm looking for a large, six-wheel dump truck with plows and wings. I've lost one of them. One of the contractors not coming back this year, so if anyone out there in television land knows of anyone with a large 40,000-pound truck with plow, wing, Xander, we need it. I will tell the board that presently what we're, what the state pays, and that's gonna probably be addressed with you shortly. The state has contracts for, you know, for these trucks. They actually, November 1st, it might be November 15th till April 15th, I think it's November 15th to April 15th. They have to commit that they've got the truck and the driver available, and if there's no stow, there's a stipend, they get paid guaranteed. I think that's a fair way to do it, but we'll be talking about it, just so it's not a surprise. I'll give you the state, what the state is doing in some of the surrounding towns, and we need to be competitive. Otherwise, you're not gonna find anyone, and roads aren't gonna get plowed till later than people are used to. Stormwater plowing. There's something else I'm forgetting. I'll see you next week if I can't come on.
Rich, can I go back for a second?
Yep.
The MS4.
Yep.
Is that EPA or EPA and DES?
Yeah, we send, for the last 15 years, you have to send a copy to both.
Okay.
DES kinda helps the EPA oversee the whole program. Actually, the DES has taken a more active role. For the first 10 or 12 years, they basically backed right away from it, and I think the state attorney general and folks got involved about five or six years ago and said, hey, we need to be more involved because the EPA is being draconian in their requirements, and if they are involved, then the EPA's backed off on some of the requirements.
And then if you could go back again to the plow that we lost, the six-wheel, did we lose it because of what we're paying or just for another reason?
Another reason.
Okay.
Did he get out of the business?
There...
There's another reason, that's the other, whatever the other reason is.
Yeah, it's that, it's been sold, and there's no one that works for that company in the area that can be available, you know, in the half-hour response time that I need. I need to pick up the phone and call my guys, and they're here, ready to go, and put the plows on the roads or sanding the roads in half an hour.
Can we put that maybe on the website, that we're looking for six-wheel, 40,000 GDW, you said?
Do you want it should say?
Yep, I'll give it to you tomorrow.
And then maybe, then maybe even do we put that on the...
I was gonna put that in the paper. Yep. Just get the word out there, because it's getting late now, it's already October, for own intents and purposes. So, I gave Susan a copy of the contract I'm proposing for you folks to look at. It's pretty, should be pretty familiar to you. There's not much difference between that and what the fire chief and what the, Rosen basically says, you know, you're gonna appoint me for a three-year term. That is the big difference. Road agent, the longest term you can appoint the road agent to is a three-year term. That's through the RSAs, and we heard that from some in the last year. To refresh everyone's memory, my elected term runs out in March. At town meeting, town meeting night, you no longer have a road agent until the selectmen appoint somebody. I'm looking to have you folks go over that contract, get back to me within 30 days. If there's glaring discrepancies, we can talk about it, but I'm looking for control of my department, you know. There's something in there about discipline. If someone comes in and asks, you know, tells me they're not gonna do that, well, I have the right to give them some time off, because I'm the boss. I will tell you, so Supreme Court rulings have backed that up. The road agent runs the highway department, the day-to-day operations, selectmen of the fiduciary agents, you know, it's all been heard before from different towns arguing. I'm not looking to be argumentative with you folks at all, obviously haven't been for, well, that's not true. I don't mind airing my... I don't think there's anything, you know, crazy in the air, but anyways, what I'd like to do with my medical condition, I don't know how long I'm gonna keep going, honestly. It's getting tougher and tougher, but I wanna keep going as long as I can. You know, I need the insurance, obviously, to pay for the treatments. I can tell you, if we sign the contract, it isn't necessarily for three years. If the board of selectmen tell me they think it's time I get done, you'll have my resignation that week. If it's because of, you know, availability, you know, inability to do my job because of the treatments I'm going through, I get it, you know, I'd be gladly step aside, but I'm looking right now to protect myself and my family. So I'm looking for you folks to move forward. This is not a big secret, we've all known since last, about this time last year when we started the budget process what was gonna happen. We had a kind of an agreement between myself and the board of selectmen this was gonna happen. So I'd like to get the contract, you know, work all the kinks out of the contract the next 30 days, agree to sign it on a date specific between now and December 1st. The day we, the day we agree to sign it, I will officially resign as the elected road agent, and that day I would expect to be appointed as the, as the appointed road agent. Again, we talked about this last year. That's kinda the way it was done, Dawn, jump in there, that's kinda the way it was done when we changed your position from elected to appointed. We didn't wait until March, so there was no question. Part of that is, it gives me a chance to do something different at town meeting if I wanted to put some more articles in. If we, if we can't come to some resolution by December 1st, then I'm gonna move forward with what I think I need to do to protect myself, which honestly, I think I've been above board with everyone. I think what we did last year, making this an appointed position, is the right thing to do, it's the right way to go for town. It gives the board of selectmen the ability to appoint qualified, doesn't necessarily go to, you know, the most popular person. Presently, the way the elected system, elected road agent system works, it only takes three per, it only takes a per, to have his name on the voting list, so town resident, pay a dollar, and then get one vote more than the next person to be elected road agent for the biggest department in the town. So, you've got it. Obviously, some of this stuff, if you wanna talk about it, not tonight, obviously, because you're just digesting it, but I'm gonna be back here every week until we get this signed, so if there's any questions, but let's not procrastinate, let's make some decisions, let's get it done. That's my request to the board of selectmen.
What I would say is, I support it then and still support it now. I think there's certain positions that should be contracted. The police chief has a contract, I think the fire chief and the road agent, we talked about others, but I do feel there should be some sort of standard, standardized, you know, and that's what I would look to do, is standardize. I know that the fire chief is looking for a contract. I think it really should be standardized between the same, the terms might be different, and, you know, salary, but other than that, everything else should be the same.
There's a little, there's a little stickling point, I tried to address it, and maybe someone smarter than I can. If, in order for you to remove the chief of police, he's entitled to a superior court judge being involved. It's RSA 105-something, 105A2, I think it is. And the fire chief has basically the same thing. You can't remove the fire chief without going through the process of taking his, we would need to present that case to the superior court judge of why you would terminate either one of those chiefs. So in the contract, I referred to that process, that I would like that same process to be handled. That could probably be wordsmithed a little bit better, but I'm not a lawyer, so that's the only, you know, major sticking point. The road agent, we don't have a good lobby, so that's not in the RSAs. Fire chief and police chief, they both have better lobbies, and that's in the RSAs. Just because you get mad at the police chief, you can't, you can't, you can't remove him, unless you have just cause, and it's, you know, it's not personal, it's not political, it's just cause. Same with the fire chief, and I'd like the road agent's job to be the same thing, at least while I...
Yeah, I mean, my feeling on it is, and I said this last week when we spoke with Grams, you know, this is something that needs to be a priority for us, to get this standardized and completed with both of you, because, you know, nobody needs this hanging over their head. I think moving forward, one of us will likely be appointed this evening to end this up and work directly with council and make sure that we have a working document, hopefully within two weeks' time.
Okay, appreciate it.
That's how I envision it. We've got some raw materials here.
Two weeks seems a little aggressive, might take a month, I would say.
All right, so we're not gonna appoint Kevin to that board.
Oh, hey, no, I'm just being realistic.
Did you check with any road super tenants or road agents or...
No, they checked with NEAs, is what they...
Yeah, or any other place?
Administerable association.
To see if there's any language that needs to be put in there that's different.
So, they would not address it with me directly, because, they will address it with the board of selectmen, because if we're adversarial, they're obviously gonna be your lawyer, not mine, so they don't want to work with me, and then have, that would kind of poison the pool about who could work for you from the Hampshire Municipal Association. New Hampshire Municipal, yeah, you know what I mean, New Hampshire Municipal Association. So I did go that, I've got the name of the people that I talked to there. They understand what we're doing, they don't have a problem with it from, you know, just basically a quick go over. They did recommend that I seek personal counsel, because I'm not gonna do that, I think that's pretty gut and dried, and at least not now.
I did, I did read it, I had a few questions, but, or another time, but I did ask some questions. It's very similar to Grams.
Most of them are tailored towards the professional, so you might, you may not be able to get a boilerplate for a road agent, fire chief, that type of thing. When I did mine, it was a while ago, searched around, got different ideas, so it's...
It's not a bad template at all, I'm just not familiar with other contracts for road agents and or...
Usually they have different RSAs and different, different things in there.
Yeah, but I'm not an experienced select person, and there are things in there that I question whether that should be part of an employment contract, and I don't wanna get into that right now, it has to be, we need to talk about it at the appropriate time.
Sure.
Just saying that for the most part, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I think there are things that are definitely gonna be trade specific, but there are also things that the town probably isn't gonna want, that council's gonna say, don't put this in there. I know there were a couple of things from one of them that they had looked at, so that would be the standardization, more than anything, of stuff that probably isn't in the best interest of the town, but that's...
So seeing you not gonna be in a battle, who got more votes, you, you, or you?
Votes for what?
Depends on the year.
For police chief?
Police chief, oh, yeah.
I'd have to look back, I don't know.
You have to, I think it changes, it's not always, it's either you or I, actually.
It changes.
As been in the past, probably not anymore.
It does.
Hey, they don't ask how many, they just ask who won.
Yeah.
Right, that's right. Even if it's my vote or yours.
Yeah, one vote, one vote more than the last, the other guy, yeah.
Exactly.
Anything else for you, Rich?
Yeah, there was another thing, but...
Yeah, it's...
Oh, saddle up, Salome, thank you. So, ridiculous Saturday night at my house. Ridiculously loud, probably the loudest, and so I'm here to talk about it. I mean, I know we're coming up on winter, and the windows can be closed, I don't know how much longer this crap is gonna go on, but basically the windows at my house were rattling. I had to close the windows, turn the air condition on, and crank up the TV so I could hear the TVs in my house. I'm, what, straight line, half a mile away, on the backside of a hill, I can't imagine looking right next to it. That, and then Sunday, the amount of traffic, the amount of people, no masks on, not social distancing, traffic problems, people taking off out of there on bikes, that are way too loud, up and down 125, acting like idiots. It's a problem, it needs to get addressed. I know you guys are working on it, but I'm here to make an official complaint as a resident. You want it in writing, I'll give it to you in writing, but what's going on there is ridiculous. I have always supported that place, in fact, that used to be one of my watering holes back in the day, so, you know, but now with the, with the live band outside, up on the roof, or whatever's going on, and the decibles that's coming off of that place is ridiculous. I know I'm getting older and more crotchety, but...
No, you're not alone, Rich. We have gotten well over 20 complaints, 20 individual complaints at numerous points, and so for the knowledge of the town, they were served a cease and desist order because they're in violation of their site plan. So, if someone is hearing loud music, they need to call the police, and it needs to be a matter of record, because the town has tried to work with them repeatedly, and they don't wanna work with us. And it's unfortunate that residents are subject to this repeatedly, it's in violation of the rules, it's in violation of their site plan, and they don't wanna work with us, so my encouragement to you and any other resident who's going through this is to call the police when the music's that loud, because at this point, that's the only recourse we have, is going that route. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry to everybody that they have to deal with that, because it's just unfortunate that one group of people think they're more important than the rest of the town, and that's where we're at.
All right, well, like I said, I will be making phone calls every weekend, but I can hear it from my house. I shouldn't be listening to a half a mile away through the woods on the backside of a hill.
I think it's safe to say that we're working with our county council, with the attorney general's office on this matter, too.
Yes, and so if people are affected by that, is again why I'm saying to either make a statement to the police at their own time, or while it's taking place, call the police, because they're in violation of the town's ordinances, and as such, we need a matter, it needs to be a matter of record. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say.
I would just like to say, I feel embarrassed as a selectman that, you know, I got phone calls, text messages three weekends in a row, and the person told me at 10:10, over in the front road area, they could hear, you know, Backstreet Boys playing, and I said, oh, they were served a cease and desist, and she goes, well, they're not ceasing desisting. And so I did call the police chief, and then I said, and the police chief said he was gonna send a cruise, I don't know what the recourse is for the police department, but 15 minutes later, I got a phone call, another message from that person saying that not Highway to Health is playing, and I guess my question would be to the police chief, if I'm breaking the noise order, I get into the, first of all, they shouldn't have been even playing because of cease and desist, but with that being said, the noise order clearly states 10 o'clock. So if I was in my house having a party, and the neighbors complained after 10 o'clock, what is the police recourse to me?
So the police recourse is exactly what we're following, which is, we go through our attorney, they've already been served a cease and desist, and the attorney gets them ready to go to court.
So if I have a party at my house, why's it different?
Because they're regulated by their site plan, you're regulated by the statute.
But we already know they're not following their site plan.
Because it matters, if they're, it's two different things. So you as an individual come under the RSA 644, which is disorderly conduct. What they come under, because they're governed by their site plan, is exactly what we serve them in the cease and desist. So that, that process is that they have to pay certain fines, they go, it's civil, they go through a civil process, they pay certain fines, if they do it one day, it's a certain amount, the second day, and they have to pay attorney fees. So the attorney will be processing the paperwork to move forward to fine them.
So if they were served a cease and desist on Friday, and we already know they...
No, Friday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, they violated Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna be sending a, basically a violation to them with a fine attached to it?
No, I would assume, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of the town attorney, because I don't know, but I would assume that he's going to subpoena them to court, because not only is there fines, but there's attorney fees associated with them. And so the difference would be with a homeowner, or anything that's not governed under any type of permit from the town, anything that's not governed under a permit from the town, if you have a live party in the backyard, and we can't be the complaining party, because by statute, we're not considered ordinary people, so it couldn't bother us, so it would have to be neighbors that complained, the noise is too loud, it's 11 o'clock at night, so we could go and give them a warning, you need to turn it down or turn it off. If the neighbors continue to complain, then we draw complaints from them, written complaints, and we can arrest the homeowner for disorderly conduct, loud and unusual noises, whether it's for a public place or a private place, or private to public.
I'm just trying to get, because I'm trying to understand this myself, but so I will...
So the difference is, because they're governed by a site plan, and they're not following the site plan, and the attorney has had them served under that, which he should, that's the process.
So, are you saying any place that's governed by a site plan follows that, so if Carriage Town Plaza?
Yep, they'd be served a cease and desist.
Now, what if we got a call Friday night at 10 o'clock or 10:30, that they were having outrageous music at the plaza?
If they're governed by a site plan, they'd come under exactly what our attorney has done, they've served them a cease and desist.
But you couldn't stop them?
So we had to...
Turn off the music?
We would go in and ask them to turn it down, if they refuse to do that, then it would fall back under this process.
Nothing we could do until, until you go to court. The attorney will file a cease and desist.
You would file, you would serve them with a, yeah, you'd serve them with a cease and desist, and they would be fined so much each day, depending, you know, depending on how long it took.
And the fines would be exponentially higher than you would for, I mean, what's laid out by statute, it's not like they're getting away with it, they're gonna be charged according to it.
I guess my question is, if this statute comes, it's another nice thing, they decide to have some playing again, okay? Granted, they're violating cease and desist and everything else, is their way at 10 o'clock, if they're still playing?
Nothing you can do until you get them into court.
But you just, at the Carriage Town, you could go over there and tell them, stop.
We could, we could tell them, we could ask them.
So what I'm saying, would you ask them at 10 o'clock at night?
Yeah.
Did you ask them this past weekend?
I'd have to ask the officer that I sent over there.
I think we have to have a plan to it, at the very least, to ask.
So, I can tell you, in this particular case, I've been on the phone two or three days with the attorney.
Oh, I know you've been straight up, I get that.
So I can tell you, the documents I provided you this evening indicates that the attorney general is taking action. So, and they would follow that same process as well. It's a, it's a civil legal process versus a criminal process. That's, that's the difference.
I'm just asking, I would just hope the very least for the residents on that end of town that have to deal with it. After the allotted time, even, forget about the fact that they're already violating, right? If it's allotted time, someone, some sort of enforcement would at least ask them to say, hey, it's 10 o'clock.
And the reason why, the difference between the civil and the criminal, because this gentleman's complaint, what she's told me, is he feels that he has a right to do what the previous owner did, so that would be a civil process, where he would tell the judge what his side of the story was, which is, hey, I feel I have a right to do this, it's in my site plan, I have a right to have outside music, and everything that the other gentleman had, versus the town side, which is, hey, we don't believe you could have it every, every night, or every day, or every weekend, and so that's why the difference between...
Or you signed this agreement stating that you would not have outdoor music, regardless of the previous person.
So that's why, that's why the difference is between the civil process and the criminal process.
I guess, I sense, I empathize with my colleague, Mr. St. James, because, you know, this guy, a very personal, nice guy, and this is a local business, and we like having local businesses for a lot of different reasons, it's always been a good place to go to, but he's pretty much telling the town to go pound sand, and that's really too bad. I mean, I don't know if he realizes that, but we have rules to follow, and we have responsibility as a board of selectmen to ensure that the law and order is preserved in the town.
Well, I mean, and the board could do a couple of things as well, I mean, under the advice of the attorney, I mean, you could ask him to come to a meeting.
Well, haven't we done that already?
You spent year three.
What I'm just saying, you could ask him to come to a meeting and have this discussion.
We could ask him to...
Well, I think we're hitting off topic here. The board does need to discuss, because it's a legal matter, and it involves council, our path forward, and what, basically, we're authorizing whoever we... path forward, and what, basically, we're authorizing whoever we appoint to deal with this directly to do. I, I don't want it to be lost, I appreciate you coming in, but again, I would respect, I would respectfully ask that if anyone is experiencing the same issue, please call the police, and please, if you don't want to call the police, come in and put a written statement in because that's where the process is at now. It's not for lack of effort on the town's part, I can assure you of that.
So I would just, hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, so at ten-ten, music's still loud and ridiculous at my house, I'll be calling, rocking in, let the police know.
Ten-oh-one.
At ten-thirty, if the police officer hasn't responded and, and the noise hasn't come down, I'm gonna call again.
That's right.
And I'm gonna call again, I'm gonna walk in eleven-thirty or till I.
Neighbor community under mutual aid, go in and talk to them.
People need to know that, one call, because, you know, if, if it continues and it's an annoyance further on the evening, you need to keep calling. I, I would guess that's what I'd want to get out there.
Well, I think the key to this is, is for the attorney to be involved ASAP.
Yep. And we'll be talking about that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll sign that as for tonight, Rich, thank you for bringing that.
Thanks, Rich. And thanks for that sign.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay, so as there is no public, we'll move to old business. The purchasing policy.
Should be in, thanks for signing it. So you talked about last week.
But it wasn't in the right form.
It was for the specific governmental entities?
This, this was for the purchasing plan that came up with last year. It added the clause, any bid over twenty-five thousand dollars will be open in public at the select's meeting instead of by the board.
We went over that.
Oh, okay.
We were in here last week.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
All right. Because there was another one I saw that, that mention about, like, certain government contracts for.
That's in it, same thing. She highlighted.
It's already in it.
It was, was it already?
It was already there.
Okay. Because we as a select would also have the right to not vote it, but that requires a vote of unanimous.
But there was a clause that's where we didn't have to.
For professionals.
Yes.
Yeah, because I questioned Rich about was it a contract, and then I found that in there.
And then we added that it's all sealed books when we send directly to the square system.
So did you need that by a motion, or?
I believe we already.
Or did that last?
Yeah.
We just didn't have.
We didn't have the appropriate format.
Where would you do this?
All right. So next is the mosquito control contract, RFP, our help officer.
Looks good, looks ready to send out.
He didn't, he didn't have any changes?
No, he looked it over, he said it looks good to him. I just need you to confirm if you want it for a three-year contract, we were always doing it for one year. And when you want it to be with the deadline for the subpoenas.
I would think a three-year contract, so we're not dealing with this every year.
Every year, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
For the mosquito.
For how long?
Three years.
That's what I put it in as, but that was option.
And then Friday, November twentieth by noon?
Yes, I have an arbitrary, you think it's.
Based on what they told us last year, that's very quick.
Do they have to secure the permits just to?
Yeah, they have to get permission from the state to bid.
Do you want to move it into December?
So with December, January?
I would, I would think at least the end of December because we don't need to spray our mosquitoes in December, January, but.
I don't know, it's been pretty warm lately.
So let's, let's give it January day.
We don't want to eliminate people just because they don't have time to do the proper paperwork.
I guess my only hesitation on that is we need to allow ourselves enough to capture this in the budget. So if it comes in way over what we were anticipating.
So that means we have to have it by the first December.
No, we have time, I don't, we have time to change.
I think, I think the last dates, December second is if we're covering our, that week.
For what?
Budget.
Yeah, I think, we have the calendar here.
So here we go.
November ninth? Wait a minute, wait, no, this, this is something different, Emily. I think, yeah, November second, I don't have my.
Is that because of the hearing, is that why we have to be December second done? I mean, I can't believe that the board of selectmen hasn't got some latitude on adding to the budget before we go to March. Just ask me, I don't know.
I, I guess my, it can, it can be a huge difference from what we're paying now.
Right.
Especially since this is a contract that we've been going off for what, nine years? The pricing?
Quite a while.
It's been a while, so, I mean.
No, the only other side to that is now there's more competition, where there used to be one or two companies, now there's ten companies.
Right.
So that's gonna help the other way.
You tell me.
I, I guess I'm just curious what that drop dead date is for the budget.
I'd have to double check, I don't have it written here. Cindy's the one who usually keeps that stuff.
So if we put it out, we, we'll have an answer next Monday, you know?
I was gonna say, why don't we put it out, and if we find out, we can find out what the problem was.
So we can have the date, the date next Monday.
I, I think it's, I think it's, it's in December.
Well, we could put, we could put the bid out anyway, we'll have the.
But we need to give them a deadline.
All right, so let's put it as the first Friday of December versus the twentieth. And then if we've got more latitude than that, we can.
We can always add a decision date too.
Yeah.
I can't remember how long people said last year it took to get the permits, but.
They said a couple, it can take up to a couple of months.
I thought it was sixty days.
The first Friday, December fourth.
So that's two more weeks than what there was.
I think we should be all set, because like I said, if, if it hap, we could add it on decision day.
And you don't know, that's after December or January, I thought that was in January. You gotta have somebody for just this type of eventuality, for the select's budget, you can't do it with.
Well, let's, let's see what happens, I mean, we gotta push it.
Now they're saying.
Yeah, if you get no one responding, NY, that'll do it. Okay.
Unitil lighting incentive.
She doesn't get the contract yet.
Cindy gave that to me today, and she said it's not binding, it's just, she misunderstood what they were asking for. Unitil needs you to request to be included in the rebate, and that's what that paperwork is for.
So it's not binding, so you, so you might not get.
No, it's not a contract, but you have to ask to get the rebate, so that's what that is.
It is.
That's the ask?
Yep.
But the rebate isn't a hundred percent positive that we're gonna get it?
That, I, I don't know, they just need that paper, that's how I understood it.
I thought it was, that's what they get.
So I'm, I'm concerned that part of this thing was based upon the rebate, that we were sure to get the rebate.
But we don't know the answer whether it's, by asking, it's guaranteed, that's what we don't know.
Do you want me to get in touch with Cindy? She said she'd be around.
Yeah, why don't you, yeah, please do, excuse me. It was shared, I have this hanging on another week.
Yeah, while you're doing that, do we need to do a motion on the RFP for?
The mosquitoes? The mosquito one?
I don't think, we have to, to make it, to go out, we have to accept them, and then we have to accept the recommendation, but to go out to RFP, we'll need a vote.
So it's just a decision for out, once you want it to look.
All right, well, she's looking that up. New business, we have fall holiday guidance.
I know the permits entered that last week.
I, it seems there's still questions on it, so I will quote the great Chris Sununu.
I thought you never put the answer the last time this came up.
Trick or treat. If they don't feel safe, they don't feel comfortable, then they definitely should not partake in either trick or treating or providing candy. So.
If they don't want participants, leave the light off.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, the town's policy has been for quite some time that the thirty-first of October is Halloween.
It's actually a lot.
And so that's.
It was done by warrant, actually.
Yeah, it's a lot.
So we.
For health reasons, we could suspend the chief. For health reasons, we could suspend it.
Hmm.
Well, I like, I like the governor's answer better.
Yeah.
Don't want to, you know, if it uncomfortable with the kids.
Yeah, just don't do it.
Close your lights.
The other, the other thing, Paul is having a trick or trunk at the rec.
Rec Center.
Center on twenty-third.
Friday the twenty-third?
I think it is. He did give us, he gave us that last week, do you remember what that is?
Yeah, I just, I just put it on the website today.
Do you remember the date?
Twenty-something. I can hook it up for you in a second, I'm just calling soon.
I know originally he talked about having it at the high school so we could do additional distancing, and he was trying to get an idea of how many people are gonna show up and that type of thing.
Yeah, he ended up at the rec center because of the bathroom, so.
I'm putting, you're on speakerphone, so I'm gonna let Phil ask the question, okay?
Okay.
What am I asking?
I assume it was about the unitil.
This lighting incentive paperwork, can you hear me, Cindy?
I can hear you.
Okay. Can you explain this, what, what this does?
That's just an application for the rebate.
For the rebate.
So this is non-binding?
No.
It is binding, Cindy.
No, no, it is not binding, correct.
Okay.
How about the, are we guaranteed to get the rebate?
No, there's no guarantee to get the rebate, this is just the application to ask for the rebate, and then unitil will have to respond to it.
So if we.
I'm not gonna put any of this in the operating light, everything together, and I told that to, to you on it today.
So if we sign the contract, there's no, there's no guarantee we're gonna get the rebate?
Well, this isn't a contract.
But it's not a contract, that's not a contract. We should sell, we need to sell, okay, we should, Ellen, Cindy, we should sign this request for the rebate in order to move the process forward.
Exactly.
There we go. Okay, y'all set then?
Yeah. Any objection to me signing that?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents pertaining to the unitil rebate and affinity contract with the town regarding streetlights.
Seconds.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
All right.
And that was to sign that paperwork right under.
Yes, yes, so that we move the process forward.
Uh, review of twenty-twenty-one draft budget to date.
Can we actually go back a second? I know I saw it the other day, the RFP for the computer upgrade, and we just did the, we're sending the RFP on the mosquito, did we already send out that one for the computer upgrade? Okay, so that's all.
See what happens when you don't come?
You should probably have stayed from the minutes from last meeting. I mean, you are here.
You can't, I'm, I'm deaf already.
Yes, then, yes, then, that's fine.
All right, just checking.
Retirement, that's cheap, huh?
Yeah, one way or.
It's probably because the state stopped giving us any money. Said that all down to where the Rocky County Division, every time they run out of money in concrete, it goes to.
That what it is, it's cost of time.
I'm, I'm hoping that this year is a year that we could be able to combine up the workers' comp and the disability insurance.
Our rate's going up because of usage, and so gossiping, the insurance company shouldn't make as much money as they want to, and so then we get to pay more? I mean, it, it seems like it's going up every year.
Yeah, we, we, they actually set the contracts, and we were trying to get them in line last year so that we could actually go up a bid, because no one would bid on just one piece of it.
Most insurance is real money.
So I'm hoping that's why these are blank, is because we're going to go up a bid, I'm hoping.
Anybody think to add the new parking stickers into our budget?
We'd have to check with.
Is that what we, is that the address or something?
It's on the town clerk, but I don't see it in her budget.
We got money, right?
I don't think anyone's bought any.
I have a question on that, or I guess a thought as I was driving by there. Would it be possible for us to make parking spots at the trailheads to kind of give Kingston residents priority parking at those areas, since all I see is mass plates there? It'd be nice to have Kingston folks not have to park half a mile away from the trailhead.
I think you'd have to, right now, isn't the ordinances already specific resident parking spots, and we have to dock those as well?
Trails, something like that, federal.
Southeast Land Trust, that's their property.
But isn't it federal?
Yeah.
Like the green.
See, we couldn't, we couldn't do that because it's not our property, it's Southeast Land Trust. We could put.
I'm sure our good friends at Southeast Land Trust could be happy to help us just to further our.
I don't think they will. The, the, I, I would.
Some days you're gonna tell us what we can do instead of what we can't do, Chief.
I'm gonna keep you from getting sued for violating people's rights.
I know, but you won't be able to keep my mouth shut.
I'm gonna keep you safe and not sued.
Ah, it's a tough job, Chief. Someone's gotta do it.
So this is just FYI?
Yeah, just to keep you informed as she goes forward, she doesn't have all the numbers in yet, obviously, but.
But Rich, that's a good question. I, I do believe we bought like a whole crap load of those.
We do, we found a good deal on them, and we jumped on them.
I don't think we need to have more for next year, is my guess, because you get the right.
I just, I just wanted to cover the income.
What was it, twenty bucks?
Yeah, I was gonna say, aren't they two dollars a piece or something?
Yeah, two dollars a piece.
We're charging too, but they, they actually cost less.
Like fifty cents or a dollar a piece?
There, yeah, because we bought enough to.
Yeah, to stock up for a couple of years.
That's only, I think I bought a hundred.
Hundred, yeah.
All right, further questions on that? Okay.
Before we go much, much further, on that fall holiday guidance, Susan had included a format in our packet that I thought was pretty good, even when, especially on the Halloween month, because it talked about safe, safer, and safest practices for Halloween, that might not be a bad thing to number one put on, on the websites and or send into the Carriage Town, that was a couple of.
Above on our bulletin board here.
In the bulletin board, yes, I think so too, yeah. It was, I thought it was well done, and, and it pretty much affirms what we said about, you know, if you're not comfortable, don't, you know, don't put your lights on, so. I'm not gonna say what I was gonna say.
Now I feel bad for interrupting you. Has the health officer reviewed this guidance?
I don't think specifically, no. I can do that, I can.
I think.
Put it in front of them before I post it.
Yeah, if we could just have him review it, and then we'll post it on the website and the TV station. Anything else? Is this just for our knowledge, since none of this is actually for twenty-twenty?
Yes, that, that also.
The only question I had, I asked Cindy personally to look at a high deductible Plan C, and my only question is, I'm looking, it doesn't show the cost.
I think it says it doesn't not available until October.
Yeah, it should show 2020 rates is what she-
Oh, okay, I got you.
October.
But it's just to show you what the options are, but she won't have the rates until October.
Well, it shows the rates here at the bottom of all the plans except for the hydropath.
Oh, that doesn't show, okay.
I get the rates may change.
Yeah.
But this shows the current rates on the bottom.
It is, these are 2020 rates, 2021 not available until October.
Yeah, I understand that. These are the 2021, 2020 rates. But it doesn't have the, what it costs right here for the deduct-
We didn't have that last year, right? So there isn't a Lester.
Yeah, I just wonder if they had, just to compare, I'm really worth it.
I'm sure she'll be able to give us here once the new rate comes up.
Okay.
So we just go straight with whatever the New Gibson, this book does and that's it? We don't, there's no private, private insurance to go through?
You can, you can go outside, but usually because they buy in bulk and all the towns are with them, it's much cheaper usually.
We, I know this is along the play, but maybe another year from now we can take a look at that. Maybe it's not so bad elsewhere?
I think we did look at that.
And it is really no options outside of House Trust because we're a small pool. We're, we're a very small pool, below 50.
So they'll get you whatever they want, is what you-
Yeah, basically, yes. Yep. That's why I was asking for the H, hydropathal health saving plan, because it might be a cheaper option for the employees.
Well, we might want to, yes, but we don't, I don't know enough about our plans and know any comment for other, to be honest with you.
Committee liaison reports.
Actually, we're going on a conservation commission and I, we're going on a site walk for tomorrow, I believe it is, as I'm looking at right now. Tomorrow, 11:00 AM. One of the trails, we've got a couple of issues with, the neighbors would like to talk to us, so if you'd like to join us?
Any shooting involved?
Well, no, no.
Not that we know of.
It's 11 o'clock, we're gonna be doing the trail off Ball Road.
Um, can I ask you, I know the conservation posted, someone dumped off of Mill Road, I believe.
Can I ask, is that appropriate to comment on the essence of the benefit?
Yeah, so we currently, it's an investigation, we had someone in the station today, and we are moving forward on that.
I saw the plan and I thought, that's an easy way to trade someone down.
Not really. Do you know what that company is? They're over in Newington, they make radios for the army. So I don't think they're host plans. Is it all the genius stuff on Facebook?
Uh, I'm not sure.
But we had someone in here today giving statements and we're moving forward.
Okay.
I talked with Tammy, she wanted to give us a heads up that the cost for elections have been very high, more than what we budgeted for. She's gonna save, keep the cost in line overall, her budget for the department, but she wants us to be aware of the additional costs that are coming down. I noticed that-
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Susan, is that something we can recoup under the?
I think Tammy, didn't they have a grant that they were going to get? That, that was for the extra safety measures. I don't know if it's the cost in general.
The state is already backpedaling on that from what I read recently, actually the union leader, in that if it's cost of doing business and if the costs are higher, oh, well. Yeah.
Well, there's a reason we had to pay people extra to come work this time, because no one would work.
That's correct. That's correct. I'm just saying that the state looks like it's backpedaling, but that's, again, I read it in the paper and the union leader no less.
Again, I mean, I think we did have to plus up our staff for that. And we had to increase our pay because our, the people we typically relied on, you know.
We had to bring in extra help. We actually had an extra day because we had to pre-process the absentees. And if you, and that was, I wanna say two or three hours, and if you think that was okay, wait till November, because we only had 300, 400, we're gonna have three times that amount for November. So we're gonna spend a full day pre-processing is what's gonna happen in November, or in October. There were days we set up.
It could, I think, go under gopher. I know it would be on the next round, because I was looking at the, September 8th is past the deadline that we just did. We also may be maxing out on our allotment if we get everything we asked for in this round, so we'll have to wait and see, but.
Well, we want to match up, and then the next step is go to FEMA.
If we can do that.
Yeah, they-
It's different guidelines, that's all.
It's different things, but.
Well, let's not lose sight of that. And then Rich sent me a picture of the welcome, the first welcome of Kingston, to Kingston sign that went up down on Danville Road and said that they should have, right after the rains this week, we should get the rest of them up. So our friends that have worked so hard at getting those signs should be happy soon. But there is one up down on Danville Road.
Good. Everybody else?
Are you gonna bring up the 700 FEMA?
Uh, I figured that would be a non-public, since that's an ongoing negotiation.
Okay.
Uh, Sam Warhead sent us our first bill, or not our first bill, but a bill.
Yeah, if you're gonna continue to use them, I think, I think they're already over the 5,000 allotted, so we need to agree whether you're keeping them on. I did reach out to them to ask if they would help us create an RFP for that testing. And I haven't heard back, but this may be why. They, we need to make sure they're still working for us.
What's the board's pleasure on that? As far as going to, for RFP, or, I think we gotta pay it, and we, you know, we did, it was a guess that it was 5,000, because we didn't exceed it last year. We do get a, we do get a detailed invoice, all right?
Yeah, I think.
Cindy? Or I don't have that.
I'm not sure.
Oh, here it is.
So I think, I think we need to have another discussion with them, because with the changes in the new law, and when does that take place? How do we proceed forward? So I think there's a lot of unknowns right now, so I think that's gonna have a big impact on us and the town, based upon the new standard for-
For the testing, the testing levels for the PFO rate?
That's not, because that, when you hit, when you hit those limits, then they make you test so many feet out for that.
I thought that was still being challenged in the court.
No.
It's in place now, according to the-
It's now law and they-
The governor signed that.
So, so that, that is a huge impact to the community and to the budget, so I think-
Did you send the bill to concrete?
The what?
Send the bill to-
No, no, the DES has already billed us for their amount.
Oh, I see.
So I think-
The other 2,500 dollars are just supposed to-
I think before we can move forward, we need to have a clear understanding on what that change in the law does to the town and how it's gonna affect the town. And, and, because we really don't know what the budget for that, because that's gonna impact, that $5,000 is gonna look like a drop in the hat.
Well, the 5,000 I thought was the Sean Point Head, and he was gonna craft an RFP for, we're done with standard, right?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
But I think over and above that, the biggest issue we're gonna be dealing with is testing and the lowest standard, because now that means a number of different things, and I think we need to, we need to have a, a very serious discussion about that.
I think we need to know from Sam Warhead what they anticipate.
Well, here's a larger question we need to ask. Do we want scientists heading this up? Or do we want an environmental lawyer who's in our corner heading this up? Because frankly, I think the strategy they were pursuing, they're just kinda like, well, these are the rules now, so this is what we're gonna do. We kinda need someone who's gonna be like, yeah, no, we're not doing that.
I think we need to talk about a legal matter, in which way we're going to move forward on it, based upon after we speak to them. Because I'm not so sure that other communities that are in the same boat that we are aren't gonna take it one step further. So I'm not sure that they're gonna take it sitting down. They may go higher to federal court, because it's gonna be a huge expense, not only to small communities like us. So I would want to discuss this with these people first. Is this thing gonna go to a federal court from above the state? Or do you have to start with Supreme Court and Hampshire thing first, and then go federal?
Didn't we, I mean, we had a letter from a community that was looking for people to jump on board, and we presented that to our council, and the council said, yeah, just do your own thing. You don't wanna jump on board with these people because the cost, you lose control of the cost or whatever. But we do, that's what we brought forward.
I think his guidance was, wait for, well-
Wait to see more town.
Yeah, I think we're getting into legal issues, but, but I agree, we should speak to them at least one more time, so at a minimum, we should approve this invoice.
Yeah.
But I think there should be at least, in that motion to approve this invoice, we should have money so that we can meet with them at least one more time via Zoom and work out our strategy going forward.
Correct. Because we need to know what the budget for next year, and we need to have a direction that we're gonna go.
So do you want me to invite them to a Zoom meeting? Is that?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think that's an everybody Zoom meeting on us and it's-
So you wanna, how do you, you want the motion just for the 1726, or do you wanna allow more money to continue through December 31st with Sam Warhead?
I think we're gonna know after we have this conversation with them. They're gonna tell us or guide us in a direction that's gonna be more beneficial to the town.
I just think we should-
I also don't know this effect of every time you go out, what that's gonna mean.
Let me tell you something.
It's gonna be like dropping a drop in a bucket.
Well, we already went, allegedly, we went out already. When they lowered the standard, that's why we have the 17 that are on the, that are on the-
We went out one ring, one drop.
Yeah.
Now we're supposed to go out another ring from what tests were possible, but we didn't do that because they raised it.
Well, so I think we definitely need to have a conversation with them.
I, I, I think I'd rather make a motion to approve the over expenditure of invoices to Sam Warhead through December 31st.
I would say that. We owe them the money.
We owe them the money, we're gonna call them, I don't know what's gonna, I don't wanna make the motion just for 1726.
Oh, we had, we had.
We did. So I'll make the motion for the over expenditures to Sam Warhead through December 31st be paid by now.
Say.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call though please.
Alessio?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Coombs?
Yes.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. Solar Hills?
Round Hard Bay.
Been out there lately?
Solar Hills, yes, we went out, uh-
Last week, so far.
On a Friday, yeah. Rich St. Hilaire and I went out. There was some construction on the far end of the, where the cul-de-sac is on the other side. Looks like there was some dirt work being done, a few trees cut down. I haven't been out since then. But there is some dirt work being done out there. I can't tell you whose property it's on. It may be on Bob LaFave's, because it's straight in, it's not to the right. My understanding is, if you go down that road, if you go to the right, that's Dave Conan's property to the far right. Oh, wait a minute, there's one lot that belongs to John Ingalls, then Dave Conan, is that correct?
I think so.
Yeah, so it may, this property very well may be Bob LaFave's, the end of Bob LaFave's property. And that's where there was some dirt work being done there. Other than that, there's no work being done on the home that has a cease and desist on it, on the left side. But if you go where, go to the far end, you go over this a little hole, that's where some of the dirt work is being done. It doesn't look like a house lot. It looks like some dirt was being done.
Should we notify council, because he was involved in the cease and desist that stopped work over there? Should we notify him as to what's going on and see what he recommends moving forward?
I would say yes.
Based on recent events, I just don't like to let these things sit and incubate.
Or we could send a letter out to the property owner and inquire what's going on? We could send a letter out and inquire.
Well, we, have we responded at all to Mr. Ingalls' letter to us?
No, we have not. Well, I shouldn't say that. I did speak with Mr. Ingalls and his wife down there, and Rich did as well. We went down to Duays, take a look, see what was going on. We did speak with him there. We have not spoken with Mr. Ingalls' attorney, because I think we need to know, we need to ask the question, what is going on?
Did you see the pictures that they sent? I think they're in the correspondence folder, wherever that landed.
I felt that that was pretty much in line with what Chief and Don had-
Yeah.
Chief and Don, the chief and Rich had reported, so.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I think, I think the next question needs to be asked is, what are you doing?
If the cease and desist in the first part of that, he's doing work for all of that property, then a cease and desist is in effect for that anyway, right? If he's not on that current property where the cease and desist is.
Well, I think, I think the cease and desist is on the whole project.
But that, of course, not even part of the project yet, I would think.
I think it's phase two, I think it's phase two.
And there's certain bonding requirements that have to be met before that can be started.
Yes, that's my understanding, yeah.
I thought that this was part of a lot further out than phase two.
No, this would be part of phase two. I think the end, I think the end of phase, I think the end of phase one is that house where the cease and desist is.
But I thought phase two is Dave Conan's property.
That's my understanding.
And if this is the property to the right, is it included in that?
It's really to the left, or it's really straight in, a little bit to the left. So I think it's Bob LaFave's, although I don't know for sure.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, my recommendation would be either we call him or send Bobby a letter and say, hey, what are you doing? What's going on?
I think we should have the attorney send that letter or something, yeah, saying, hey, you have a cease and desist.
And there is a cease and desist in place.
Yeah. I, I guess my feeling on it is, if there's already a cease and desist in place, I think it's within our best interest to make sure the attorney is at least guiding us as we proceed forward so that we don't have any missteps.
Yep.
All right.
Are you gonna talk to the attorney?
Yeah.
Any other board business items for public session? Okay.
We had a couple of facilities use requests that just came in. I know they're last minute. They're kinda minor items though, if you wanna take a look.
Yeah, I've got one from the VFW Post 1088 Auxiliary. Pumpkin carving and coloring contests on 24th and 25th. Uh, the auxiliary would like to use the steps at the town hall to display lighted carved pumpkins on Saturday, October 24th through Sunday, October 25th. Participants purchase their own pumpkin of any size, carve it at home and deliver it with the entry form and payments of $5 each pumpkin to the town hall steps, October 24th, between the hours of 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Volunteer will check in the entry. And there's a Facebook live judging between 4:00 and 5:00 PM. And information, and pick up at the pumpkin on October 25th between 10:00 and 2:00. All monetary prizes are first place for $200, second place $100, third place $50.
Wow, must be planning on getting a lot of pumpkins.
Tend to a double, you can enter. Coloring contest is updated.
I'm a better color than pumpkin carver.
It's only updated, right?
You gotta cover social distance, so you gotta throw it.
Susan, I do not throw those pumpkins all over the cliff, but it's-
But is that, is that gonna be one of those things? Because it's at the VFW.
No, it's here.
And when they have it in the front steps of the town.
My first reaction is like, well, we're not allowing anything, but it's not really, it's, it's for the display only to take in the-
Right, there's just one person checking it in, person goes and places it there, so I think that's festive.
Should look nice out there in front steps.
Nice to have something nice done at town every now and then.
Yeah.
Any objection?
Not at all. Not at all.
Why are you doing that? I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 21st, uh.
I got a couple more facilities use items, actually. Sorry. Uh, the Kingston Conservation Commission would like to use the rec building on October 17th between 1:00 and 5:00 PM for a seed swap.
A what swap?
A seed swap, wildflower seeds.
What's?
It's part of the pollinator pathways program.
Clear that they, oh.
Right, and how about, how many people?
They did talk to Paul.
What's the number of people we're expecting?
That was the one that wanted to look at, we talked about, they wanted to come in here, and we said no, because we, because we couldn't do the social distancing and cleaning and all that other good stuff.
Was that the seed swap, or was that?
Yeah, they called it something else, but that's what it was. It was a seed swap. It was a seed swap. And then they couldn't use the library, so then, this is the next one.
Okay, so this is on the 17th. Can we get clarification on how many people?
Okay.
And can the health officer review that plan?
And see if it's available with Paul.
Well, they did talk to Paul, that's.
No, it didn't say it was.
Oh, okay, you have it as Paul.
Not that one going over here.
We had a letter of complaint also.
Um.
It's a letter of complaint. You may be the only one that has it in your stuff, Phil, because I just got here too. The rooster complaint.
Oh.
Oh dear.
How are we handling the Mr. Complaints?
One feather at a time.
One feather at a time.
Don't get cocky.
One feather at a time. This is for you to sign.
Do you wanna read that?
Sure.
Give me your two cents. Um, while Don's looking at that, can I like to get a motion to sign this MS4 general permit for permit year number two?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second, further discussion? Roll call though, please.
Alacio?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Coombs?
Upstein.
St. James?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
I can address this. That's why we take pictures without anyone's coming.
Huckshots.
To make sure they're a grandfathered rooster.
Is this one of the ones that are not grandfathered?
Uh, it sounds like they've got a new one. We've been dealing with this one for a while. The old, the old one, uh, we've been dealing with for quite some.
Can I see it in a second?
Yeah, sure can. I'm sure, uh, our animal control officer, Javi, will know just by looking at them.
I believe it's a new one, from what I understand.
I didn't know there was even any of them.
Yeah, yeah.
There were and now there is.
Yeah, he goes, he goes up to everybody.
Uh, so we've been CC'd on a letter from Robert Stewart to a resident who's been trying to build on an unbuiltable lot.
Mr. Hannigan.
Yeah, I've seen it, I've, I've read it.
Anyone wants to see that? Um, we don't require any action on that.
So my, my question would be, he's been waiting for it for a while, so if we've accepted that, we should probably send it out to him. He's been waiting for that receipt for.
Waiting for what?
Who, Mr. Hannigan?
Yes. So we're, I think he's waiting for that letter. Has he sent that letter out yet?
I think he sent, I have to check with Robert in the morning, because he asked me to set, give it to you, he's running.
So maybe he wants us to approve that letter to be sent out?
Yeah, yeah, he didn't say that, he just CC'd you, but, um, if, if that's what he's waiting for, I'll make sure that he knows that you saw it.
Yeah, I think he's waiting probably for.
I think he might have sent it today, because he asked me to give it to Abby as well.
Is he coming to ZBA?
Don't know, not yet.
Oh, no.
Think I gotta, took, took the wind right out of my sails.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 21st, both public and non-public, as written.
Second.
Say motion and second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. O's? Upstein?
That's you.
That's passes.
Get a little look at the picture.
Doing my shot.
All right, um.
Second, to Mr. Hannigan.
At this time, the board will enter non-public session to discuss a legal matter. Uh, that will conclude the televised portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you very much for joining us.